Good evening, everybody. Tonight is the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 22nd, 7:00 PM on the National Olympic League Rock. Please.
And this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
At this time, I ask for a vote. Have a time, man?
Thank you.
Item C to approve the March 8th meeting. You have a copy of that in your package.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 8th, 2021.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Public comment? Hearing none, we go right into due business. In your package, you see item number one wants to consider an act on intent agreement between the town and Plainfield with the local 1303-185, Council for ASME, AFL-CIO executed on and dated February 24th, 2021 for CBA covering the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2024. We need to take action by Board of Selectmen pursuant to the Connecticut General Statutes 7474. That was a technical matter, I apologize. So at this time, what I would like to ask is that we hereby move that Board of Selectmen, along with the Finance Director, Kelly DeShawn, and the Town Attorney, Kristen Kelly, voting second session for purposes of discussing strategy and/or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining with parking units. This action is taken without prejudice. The town's right to discuss these matters in a private meeting pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-202.
Make that motion.
Park makes that motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. We are not going to exempt the session at 7:00 to the end. Second session, no votes taken during executive. Motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So I'd like to make a motion to have the Board of Selectmen approve your request for funds necessary to implement the agreement between the town and Plainfield and local 1303-285 of Council Number 4, AFSCME, AFL-CIO, town hall employees for the period of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2024.
Now, second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item two on our agenda is to discuss the preliminary budget data for your input from the Board of Selectmen to the upcoming budget season. There's a lot of data. Try to categorize it so that you have an idea of, in your mind that you received, you have the calendar for this year, the Board of Education, Board of Finance, and the town budget dates for meetings. And then after that is a draft of what is being proposed for the budget for this year. And I'm sure that the Board of Finance is going to ask us to make further clarification on this, but basically, this is what we have at this moment. And then there's more detailed information there, department by department, of what the modifications are. I would highlight that there are a few things to discuss briefly. Basically, something we're doing, or I look to do, is I'm looking to get, you know, in order to put on, moving up the, there's a person who has two positions in the town, but I don't make, so it's easier to figure out exactly what that person's doing in one line item, so that that's one of the things, one of the biggest things you'll see in this booklet, is it shows the computer hardware software, instead of having it lumped into the end of the whole budget process, it's actually breaking it down by department. So now you know what that department means versus, you know, what's a big group, but under one line, so you can, so it gives you a little better, a little better of understanding where that comes from.
Kevin, I did have a question on the highway and the mechanics of the police department.
Yep.
That's you.
Yeah, yeah. So if you notice that we've had for many, many years is the mechanic that works at the police station, but he's actually in the union for the highway department. So we're trying to put it properly to say, here's what the highway department's budget is. I mean, it's just a hypothetical, because what happens is if you ever say, I'm going to get rid of a department, here's everything I would fall to anything, that department. And that's a great question, because the same thing would happen on our computer, because if you've had, your computer line is broken down, and you're going to say, we're not going to have, I'm not saying this, we're not going to have a renovation anymore, but at least you know exactly where it gets all encompassed into one area. But that's what I did, I'm going to go over that one way over into the highway. And you'll notice in the, at least, section, the department section, that it is actually taken out of there. So that's why there's a reduction or other sound is moving down a bit. So I drafted this up by meeting with Kelly and each of the departments. We put together the proposals. We've had some modifications recently. I think I mentioned that the rectory record is now putting in, trying to implement some more things and put more things in play. For those people who are interested, go to the rectory department's website, Facebook page, there's a whole bunch of things starting to come up. Part of it is because the governor's office has been able to open up some things, so it does make it so we can actually start doing things again. And there's some things in there that we are, we did this year that are not in there for next year, not in general. Such as, you'll notice that the herbicide for the pond is not inferred this year because it was a one-time thing. We had, I put fireworks in again for this year because we anticipate that we will have, we talked to the groups that's putting together the DJ parade and also the plant builds, some of the plant build, and because they're going to come back, we thought that that would be a good idea to see that process on the fire list. We ran a hazard waste day, you see that's there again for this coming year. Hazard waste day was actually, this weekend worked very, very well. Now we're just waiting for a little bit.
Now, how many people actually?
I'll get those numbers for you, because I think it's important to know how many people were able to access that, how much tonnage was actually brought in, what type of materials were brought in. I think the lines were expected, because, you know, when you open up, everybody wants to get their first and get it out. So it took a little while to get those numbers down, but it was very, very, very well organized, I thought. Everybody told me the same thing, they drive up, they didn't get out of their vehicle. They had people actually go ahead and take care of it for you, they emptied everything out for you, and knew exactly where to go. So it was, it was very well organized. There's not a lot of modifications, other than until we get to, which will be item number three on our agenda, but anyway, there's, there is some.
The United Services.
Yes. We're trying to do our very best, I know we talk to Tom on a regular basis, about how we can actually get the budget to bring it back to a zero mill again. We think that there is an opportunity to do that. I know that it has to be some cuts, and we'll talk about the future, but I definitely wanted to have you have, have some, an idea. We have a five-year capital plan also, we're tracking continuously as of today. So still want to go forward, a lot of things with five-year capital. So I know this is a lot to digest in an evening, but definitely have questions, we can definitely bring them up at the next meeting. And I'm not mistaken. According to that calendar, today was the day that the budget estimate was due for the Board of Selectmen. I give a copy to Tom. If you didn't get it, Tom, we have a copy in the other room. And then meetings will then start, we'll start with Department Heads for the Town on the 14th at 6:30.
The Board of Selectmen, of course, is invited to the first technical budget meeting, which runs on Wednesday, March 31st at 6:30.
Okay.
That's going to be just a general discussion of the budget, and certainly, if there's questions or suggestions, welcome to the voice line.
Yep. I think on the first section there, we talked about the annual budgets proposed for 2021 on the last page. Let's see that the new permel is just a terrible one million dollars, which would then be, if we were to put everything out from the Board of Education and also from the Board of Selectmen side, that our new mill would be inclusive of increases of 615, 692, but I really do anticipate we'll be sitting back talking about what we can bring back to make it to a zero mill increase. And still try to get, you know, moving forward is what we're having to fight.
Do you have an idea, Kevin, where you would even be getting the call?
There's a few ideas. I think, though, I have to sit down and weigh them out back and forth between what might be more progress more than one another, but yeah, I do have a few ideas.
You want my questions?
Okay.
Or you want my?
What do you?
Okay. Adult education?
Adult education was the question.
Adult education is going to be absorbed in the school budget as a grant. So they'll get money from State of Connecticut for adult education, and they'll have their expenditure, their own purse, they'll just apply the grant to that expenditure.
So it won't show any revenues? Okay.
And we won't have the expenditure on our side, it'll be on their side.
Okay. Expenditures? Legal notices in the Selectmen?
Uh, legal notices. All right.
Down.
Okay, is that on page?
First page. We're on page three.
Page three.
On the Selectmen.
Okay. Yeah, the legal notices are there, dropping it down to 2,500. We are, we've been using the term by buyer to, you know, help us with the legal notices. There are a few legal notices which still require us to go to the notes relative, but in utilizing that process, we wouldn't say quite enough.
Next page. Election workers. I, I was kind of wondering why it went from the 1920 budget to the 2021 budget.
Yep, if you remember, last year, the issue was raising it to a $15, because it's minimum weight, that's why they jumped from last year.
Okay. I thought it was because it was presidential election.
Yep.
Going down, part-time groundskeeper. Build any grounds?
The request was to put an additional part-time groundskeeper out there during seasonal times. So, in fact, the question, that might be one of the ones that actually ends up coming out.
Okay. Electricity town hall?
We've been monitoring our bills, and that's what the anticipation is.
Right. You don't know?
No, no, actually, it's not so much that. You can never tell exactly where it's coming from, but in this case, you can, because of COVID-19, we haven't been running the pool as a sole function, and also.
The electricity for the town hall, we're having recreation cover the recreation building before it came out of the town hall.
Yep.
So now you're going to see in his recreation, he has utilities, so it'll be up there, and that's why it's reduced.
Yeah.
That's one of my questions, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's three things, basically, he's got it in his, COVID-19 has knocked down, but the fact that we haven't been using it as much, so.
And that's, that's the same for the lifeguards and whatnot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that the same for the water, building the grounds?
Very much, yep. They're not using that.
Could just create.
Use the water.
They didn't last year, are they going to this year?
Well, he's starting to bring the programs in slow, so I anticipate that it'll build up over time, but right now, it's taking small classes less use.
Highway supervisor overtime?
All right.
13,000?
Yeah, we, the idea would be that we anticipate on separate line items, you know, separate there before. The anticipation is at least, so you can actually model from what we've had this year, previous years, know and anticipate how much is going to be coming up for next year, we'll put it in the line item, so that way, it's grouping and has his overtime versus other, the other overtime data stand.
Okay, you would have just said that.
Yep.
Same, highway, contract services, is it?
Contract services is something I have to follow up on, that may come out of there as well, but I think what we were talking about is cleaning of different uniforms and also some of the purchases, yeah, that's one of the other ones definitely would be considered, should we take that out.
Okay. Page five. Annual control, Department Head.
Yes.
And staffs.
We were anticipating. Yeah, we were anticipating that might happen, so we made some adjustments. All depends on, to the union, and where we go with this stuff. Right now, that's where I have it, I have to pull it back right now.
And government recreation.
Yep.
So there's insurance benefits, unemployment.
Uh, there was a.
There's a credit. There's a credit in it right, right now?
Yeah, it's a credit.
There's a credit, so it's going to roll over to next year. There's no way we're going to absorb all of it.
So right now, we have an overage credit.
Okay.
And so that's.
So I wanted to reduce the budget to reflect it.
So we're adding this 6,000 to the credit.
Yeah, we should be fine.
Yep.
Second vacation accrual, right after that?
Second vacation accrual is based on the union contracts.
General Town, engineering firm.
Absolutely, great question, because what we're trying to do, when you look at the five-year capital, is there are some opportunities for us to go after grant monies, but we're self-paid for the engineering firms. There is a project for Laker Road for the sidewalks. There's a project we anticipate going back after some different grants, not the community grant, but a different grant for the Oregon sidewalks. There's an opportunity to go after monies for, we have an issue over on Cemetery Road, where there's water runoff that goes down into a property. Well, there's three roads that feed that, we need to do a better job of cleaning that up, so we have a plan to do that engineering for that to occur. And so let's suppose there's also, what do I, I see, traffic, but there's other green for engineering.
Might, yeah, might be questions. At what point, do you say we need a town engineer? What would it cost for a town engineer yourself?
I think it would.
Are we close to that now?
Could be. But then, yes, contracting, you know, if you're, if you're contracted, so it's, it's a good question to weigh out the usual, if they do that. I think it's up to 75, only because I know there's a lot of projects I'm going to be able to try to engineer part of it. And if those done, there's also a downward bridge, that's another one. There was the streetlights condition on over here behind, put road ad, put streetlights over there, so there's a lot of projects. There was a project that we were talking about the week until the spring thaw for on the road, making sure the weight limitations are correct. So there's a lot of things that they're doing, drivers and stuff, so we're utilizing that effectively.
I understand that, so, I guess. If you had tomorrow.
Yeah, absolutely. That has concluded, they get to figure out benefits.
Yeah.
Yep.
So for this year, I guess it's good.
Right, I think.
If we find, we.
Yep. I think in the future years, absolutely, you can consider and weigh out the numbers, whether it's 75 or 80,000, or what it's going to cost to pack some of the input.
I may have just seen it go up since, since the time we took him on, those are.
I'm just, I, I, I'm trying to be aggressive with the events that are happening, because the different things are going on, and if we're prepared for it, at least we have money available.
That's me. The question, we must ask the next one. Legal fees?
Okay, legal fees. There's an anticipation of a continuation for things that are going on this year, it may drag into next year, and so I don't want to be caught short on legal fees, and so for the most part, it's, you know, one individual that's causing me to be very cautious on that.
I'm going to come back to this one, the computer. On page seven, this is just from my calendar. It's a fund balance, and it says something oil system.
HVAC.
Okay.
That's another great question. What I was looking to do is try to find a way that we can actually properly not rely on the boiler system cat and car, because sooner or later, that boiler system is going to fail. So I've, I've reached out to one company to see if they had an off ballpark idea, how much it would cost to actually heat and AC this room. Today's not bad. Normally, in the wintertime, you're freezing again, and so you're spending a lot of heat just to keep it covered. Same thing in the summertime, there's no AC. So this whole building is what I was looking for, and it would be a two-year system. The first year, I was looking to put in $80,000, and the same thing for the next year, because you don't want to have, you want to be able to rent this a little more, and without that, you know, comfort level in summertime is just, it's steep. As you can remember from having town meetings there, the 300 people on it, in the summertime? Yeah. So again, it's something we should do, because those, the heating systems are going to last forever, and we need to look at all the capital. So what was asked for the first act?
I don't want to, computer.
Previous page?
Why, I don't want to say.
Numbers don't add up, right?
Huh?
I'm going to say, numbers don't add up, right? Simple. I kept into a budget this year, I wanted to hold onto that budget this year. What we, what we found here is if you look at every single department, you'll find that every single department is $173,000 altogether, and then you've got this. A lot of these are all contracted, for, a lot of this is contracted for the licensing. There are some departments which are looking to increase and actually add computers. Police Department has 22 computers. They'd like to put into budget, which they have, 11 of those three, at least, this year and 11 of next year. They are very.
They have a home.
That's right.
Computer budget.
Right, that's why you see that their number is 136,000.
I'm not, I'm not questioning this, I'm questioning the town side.
Yep.
You have, in your line items, in the different departments, totals of 46,443, right? And then you have a line item in general, Town computer.
39,647.
39,647. So total, we're going to, we're expending $86,090, versus what was budget last year, was 125.
If you look at the other budgets and the other departments, you add them all together.
That's 44, 46,443.
What?
46,443.
Take a look at the police.
I'm just on this one.
Take a look at the police.
I'm not talking about police.
Okay.
Police is.
Okay.
They, they.
But you're talking about just departments within the town hall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the departments in the town hall is 46,443.
Right. Was it 125 last year?
And adding, no, adding the general Town computer of 39,647, this is 86,90, 86,900. So this is why I'm assuming the Town side, not the police, but the Town side, is 86,900.
I have to get you those numbers.
Because you, you have another paper here with just a computer, done right here, proposed computer.
That's the police department.
Now, police is ours.
Oh, like 39?
Yes, which you have in the general Town.
Right here, 39,647, those are the Town. Some licensing.
Right, and then you have.
And a couple of computers.
Then you have in the, in the departments themselves, the line items.
Right.
Which totals up, what did I say?
88 something, or 86.
Yeah. So that's the number that we're going to be spending on computers, rather than 125,000, correct?
You've got to understand that 125 from last year includes the police.
Does it?
Yes. That's why I mentioned right off the bat, that the police, inclusive of the Town departments, I had an all-to-a-budget of 125. Let's get by for one year and then split it out for next year, and that's what we're doing right now. He was on a budget, and we're trying to get by, like, this year with minimalized purchases and buy stuff, just to make sure the software is, for recovery now. That's why I said they won't match.
So I look at 219,000?
84. Proper. I think the next year will be much less, because your, your purchases for computers will drop. It's got a lot in here. How many departments? I think at this point, I probably have a second all this computer.
Yeah.
Maybe second. Yeah, I mean, it's a lot to digest, because a lot of them are in here. But it does do a breakdown of work for the departments, so I'd also go back, back and forth. So tonight, we were just going to discuss the preliminary budget. I very much appreciate if you have any questions or concerns, that when we get to our next meeting, we can definitely discuss what those are, and see what we make modifications.
One tough question, how do you discuss, well, on the fire marshal, I see that you increased the 6,000. Have you found someone to do that?
Um, we did actually find somebody that came in for an interview. Question is, if we're going to hire or not, we're getting to that point, I would argue. Very, very nice gentleman, knows his stuff, certified, so I'm looking at your problems there.
And will, so will he still take care of the area, will he still be proud of that?
That's the other thing we're going to talk about, yeah, on the final piece, because that would be nice, that would be something else we could have, we're still be able to get support.
On that note, is he going to be a supervisor?
That's, I, I'd rather not discuss that part of it right now.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we're going to want to, number three on our agenda says, review our request for funding community services, and I apologize for the length of time you have sat there for all the, but, well, if you wanted to use a mic, we have one available.
I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
All right, hello, everyone. I'm Emily Morrison, I'm the Director of Development at United Services, and I have with me Diane Manning, she's our President and CEO. So at Ted's desk, we are talking about a request for funding community services, and that is part of the reason why we're here. Diane and I have met with Kevin a few weeks ago, and we had asked for that meeting, partially because of the request, but also partially because United Services is seeing huge increases right now in community mental health need, and so we are checking in with all of our Town, all of our Town leadership, to make sure that everyone knows who we are and what we do, so that you know where to turn. So, kind of both of us are looking to do tonight. So I do also have printed copies of the presentation, that might be a little bit easier for you to follow along with, and then just swing. So who we are, we are a comprehensive nonprofit community behavioral health center, we're the local mental health authority for 21 towns in northeastern Connecticut, including Plainfield, and we also, and the region's only domestic violence program. And so here in Plainfield, we have quite a presence. One of our three clinical centers is Maryland Oregon, one of our group homes, Milner House, is in Musso. We partner with the school to offer the STEM program, School to Employment, and that's partnered with special education students, offering job education, job training, job placement, and job shadowing and coaching. And then our most recent development is our FEMA coaches, so that's a new program that we've got through federal, COVID assistance for our community health, and these are crisis counselors providing services, we need to the pandemic. So they have been partnering with the Plainfield Recreation Department to offer signups for the COVID-19 vaccine, so they did two earlier this month, and their third one is actually this coming Wednesday, and so so far, they've signed up 48 people to receive the COVID-19 vaccines, and that's been a great partnership. But the bigger piece for our presence in Plainfield is in the services that we've provided to Plainfield residents. So if you're able to flip to that information, maybe we'll see a little clearly, but, so this is, it's a form of super FY20, so July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, so really only capturing that first quarter of the pandemic. As an agency, during that first quarter, we helped study, saw some small increases, but since July 2020, really up to now, we have seen spiking increases, just some of our programs are operating at a more than 200% increase over non-COVID times. So really seeing a lot of community mental health, we've ever seen that in Plainfield too, even before the pandemic. So we're really seeing a lot of community mental health, and we're seeing that in Plainfield too, even before the pandemic. So you'll see, um, in red, are the percentages of, um, program increases from the previous year. So a lot of programs had pretty significant increases. Some were about even our child guidance clinic, and some of our programs like juvenile review board, that wasn't broken out in the previous year, so I couldn't compare apples to apples. But where you would see our biggest increases, where as an agency, we're seeing our biggest increase, so a hundred and fifty-five percent increase in our crisis services. So this is a program, um, that deploys missions out into the community to respond to individuals experiencing mental health crisis. They often respond with police, and it's one of our most critical, um, programs out in the community. Overall, as an agency, we provided direct services to six hundred and seventy-three Plainfield residents last year, that's four percent of your population. The national average is that in any year, four percent of our population will experience a behavioral health issue, and only one percent will seek treatment. So we're exceeding that in providing a lot of direct services here in Plainfield. Overall, we provided over twenty thousand units of service, and that was a thirty-two percent increase from the previous year. So additionally, on top of our, um, services, and one of our thirty-four most valued that's unique to Plainfield, is we are the designated youth service bureau for six towns in northeastern Connecticut, including Plainfield. And because of that, we, uh, make it separate funding across the town, which I'll go over a little bit more later. But so YSC is a new service that is only eligible to Brooklyn, Canterbury, Eastford, Killian, Plainfield, and Sterling. And the state definition of this program is coordinating entity for youth services for a municipality. So that's very broad, and across the state, YSCs do a lot of different things. United Services are YSCs, we have always offered free trainings for parents and youth, usually do at least one per quarter. So some of our recent topics have included, um, adolescent substance abuse and vaping, home alone safety, um, suicide prevention, narcand use, and, uh, social media safety. So our most recent training was, um, in February, on Zoom, home alone safety for kids, we capped that at fifteen families, three of which were from Plainfield. Our, um, prevention services manager, Lori Borster, works very closely with all schools in her area, she has a particularly close relationship with Plainfield, because she also runs a STEP program. So when she has programs like these, she sends them out to her school contacts and says, this is what's going on, please pass them on to your families. Um, she also checks in with the schools regularly, you know, what do you have going on, what can the YSC help you with? Additionally, we always offer pro-social activities for youth, we run after-school youth club. In the past, this has been open to Plainfield students, because of COVID, this year, um, it's closed only to co-ordered, totally high school students. So our hope is sometime in those sunny futures ahead of us, we'll be able to open them back up, um, to all different school districts. To be honest, I don't see that happening in the fall, um, but you can always dream. But definitely someday, we're, we're looking forward to, and that'll be a possibility, and for Plainfield students, the, the program is Health Power, Oregon Clinic, so it's super easy. And we've, in the past, we've had high participation from Plainfield. Uh, we also run tea clubs, these are in the early evenings, we have one for boys and one for girls, and this is open to everybody. Um, in non-COVID times, we also do a lot of free family activities throughout the year, pictures of the Easter bunny, pictures of Santa, free giveaways, usually attend events like celebrate Plainfield, um, and, and, you know, car seat safety checks, home safety giveaways, anything we can kind of do to reach out to the community, which we haven't been able to do as much in the last year. But looking forward to things changing. Uh, so the Department of Children and Families is the funder for the YSC, and their focus has been school truancy. So we are the truancy hub for the school districts, um, so when we have students not attending class, the school makes referral to our YSC, and Lori, our prevention manager, gets in touch with the family, um, does an assessment, and provides case management to help identify and resolve barriers to school attendance, and get the kids back where they should be in the classroom. Um, so so far this school year, we've had three referrals from Plainfield, but we're expecting more this month, we've been seeing them up to, and we are expecting, um, as schools move back into full-time in-person learning, we expect a big spike, because there'll be a lot of kids that don't want to be back in the school buildings all day, every day, again. And part of YSC is juvenile review board, um, so this is Assistant to Denver Youth, uh, from the juvenile justice system. So it's a committee made up of a variety of community members, clergy, police, parole, DCF, um, school, and, um, they take cases that would otherwise go to the juvenile court, so the youth and the family sits before the committee, they answer some questions, and they come up with a plan together, which usually involves restitution, some community service, um, admitting they're safe and showing that they have learned from it. Uh, we're also with helping school resource officers, Plainfield police, the resident state troopers, and truancy. And we formed a girl, so the JRB from Plainfield last year. So, um, within your capacity to see letters from us, we sent two letters to the town, one for town support, so this goes generally to our programs. Um, goes direct to our program costs, not administrative costs, and we asked for seventy cents per capita. Because we provide services regardless of an individual's ability to pay, we reach out to our towns for support, uh, to help us bridge the gap between the state funding that we seem to run our programs and the actual cost of the comprehensive care that we provide, especially in this area where transportation and our rural areas, um, is often so vulnerable to treatment. Uh, so we've not changed that amount for twenty-five years, and it's based on your population, which is still around about the two thousand and ten census, so we asked for ten thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars from the town of Plainfield. And then we sent one additional request, and the reason for that is that state statute requires us to request a ca, a cash match for our youth service bureau, and so we have to prove to the state that we've made that cash match, which is why we send you a separate letter. And that's also determined by formula, uh, based on a population under age eighteen. So Plainfield has thirty-one percent of our total six-town youth, so we asked for thirty-one percent of our total state funding match. Again, we did not make this formula up, the state tells us what to do, and we follow it in its confusing fashion. So... That's everything I have for our presentation, I appreciate your time and patience, I know it's a lot to go through, because we do a lot. And as I said, we're seeing a lot of increases really across the board, and so we're hoping that towns are able to partner with us and to keep doing this work and providing these services that we really are reaching here in Plainfield.
Thank you very much, Emily, and Diane. And I know this is something that the town, thanks for, um, receiving services. You work in partnership with the schools, you work in partnership with, with the town people, so, um, and there's one question I did have for Diane. Have you heard anything about state funding, if they modified the end affair, taking the same amounts from last year?
The governor's budget included no increases whatsoever, despite the increases we're hoping, that the corporations committee will add something in. In our crisis services, we're at about two hundred and sixty percent of what we did same time last year for our mobile crisis, that's, keeps going up. So we will have to, in order to maintain that, we're gonna have to take the funds from somewhere else without any additional funding coming in. The police are using us way more than they used to, um, because they're responding to crisis and, and prefer to have a social work specialist on board with them when they are responding. We're finding the same thing in our domestic violence responses, we do what's called, the police do a lethality assessment, so if they go out to, to a place and they think there's been potential for domestic violence, they will make a referral to our domestic violence program that then, again, reaches out to the victim, um, may go with the police in order to help somebody leave. So there's lots of, of programs where we're really working closely with your first responders in the, um, and we become sort of the, an adjunct to the first responders.
I think the state is looking to get more and more support from social workers when they, uh, go in to support police, that was definitely highlighted last year. And, uh, you know, it's very much appreciated that you've helped and support that there is. I did have one question, one other question, um, you were talking about STEP and being able to work with the, with the, that program, are you doing that at the Oregon site somewhere else?
So STEP is actually provides, um, job coaching, uh, uh, on the job sites. And they start at Plainfield High School, and then take transportation from high school to their job site. So that program did not run this year because of COVID, but they're meeting now and organizing it, and they are planning to run it next school year. So that's, that's right at the high school, and then at the, at the sites where the students are employed.
I do appreciate you coming out, I know that, um, we talked briefly before, and, um, I know that the town of Plainfield had in the past been working with United Services against the donations. I'm not sure what we can offer, I know that I put a little bit of money in there for this year, uh, we still just obviously broke out a lot of it, and, um, I know I, I vote for it, but we have, you know, we, we don't have to put something up in front of the public, so I don't know what is going on. So I do appreciate your time, this, this, being filmed, so hopefully everybody can get an idea of, you know, what's going on with your, your program, so, uh, very much appreciate it. If anybody else has any other question?
No, not at this time, thank you very much, all right, thank you.
All right, okay, the only other item here is other. I can just follow up with what's been going on recently, obviously, we mentioned earlier that we had the, um, House Call Passes Police Day, a very successful event. We also just received word today that the, one of the grand STEPs was applied for for, I think it's not for STEP, uh, to get computers for the Rex Center, for STEP program. So that was received at five thousand dollars. So that's a start, and, um, with the other things that are going on. We have also met the other day at the, uh, both in Musso Park and also Plainfield Park, for, uh, cleaning up the park, for any, uh, new cocaine for the tanks. I have to say, I, I was shocked how many people volunteered their time, came forward, said how to, how to, maybe upgrade those parts and do something really nice, not just a tank, but the parking lot. So we'll be meeting up in the next couple of weeks, to see what we can do, uh, in each of them, and, um, if you want to meet there. I just can't, you know, express how much, um, energy from these gentlemen, if they want to put something together, maybe build a next. So, uh, plans are still in progress, we'll see if we can get some more concrete information for you. I think that's about it, so anybody has anything else, other?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. And if it was said, all the papers say aye. Thank you very much.